I will now call to order the July 7, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. County Council, Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board, Tony Mayernick. Commissioner Fisher is on her way but is not here right now. Roll call. Commissioner Schull?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Present.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you please introduce the first item?
Yes, first is a public hearing, and it is a first reading of an ordinance, amending Chapter 2.07 Compliance Hearings Officer, amending Appendix B Fines, amending Chapter 2.09 County Administrator, amending Chapter 6.03 Emergency Regulations, amending Chapter 6.08 Chronic Nuisance, adding Chapter 6.13 Exclusion of Persons from County Buildings and Property, and amending various chapters of the Clackamas County Code to eliminate bias and gender specificity and declaring an emergency. Phew. Scott Seco and Jeff Munn, Assistant County Councils, will present. Looks like just you, Jeff, perhaps? All right, just Jeff. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, and good morning, Commissioners and Chair Smith. And after that title, I guess I should just say any questions. There's a lot here. Obviously, the materials I submitted were about 500 pages because revisions and the additions to the code need to be submitted in full text, so sorry for all of that. And forgive me for not bringing all of it. I didn't want to print out all that paper. So I have the changed copies here with me. But yes, it's a lot of changes. And so part of it was prompted by the 2020 Board Resolution instructing our office to do a review of the county code for bias and to eliminate bias in our code. And we'll get to that at the end, but that's where the majority of the changes are. And along with that, we have a number of code sections that were changed, starting with Chapter 207, the Compliance Hearings Officer. So the changes in this section are changing some of the names of the process steps for code enforcement to line up better with what's occurring. For instance, changing something from Statement of Facts to an Allegation Letter. A good example is somebody makes a complaint against a property owner, and so then code enforcement would send a letter to that property owner saying, "An allegation's been made against you." And so that's an example of where these steps have been changed, reflect more of what's happening in the process and the communications going to the public, so it's clearer and easier to understand as they go through the process. With that, the change to the Sufficiency of Evidence section to better allow for this Board to adopt different priorities for enforcement. Violation letter is added to clarify the current practice for the imposition of the administrative compliance fee in the process. And then the Administrative Compliance Fee section has been clarified to avoid situations where a respondent could claim that they'd cleaned up the property. What it does is it changes so that this ends when the county verifies that the violation's been abated, instead of somebody saying, "I cleaned it up," and then they go out there months later and they hadn't. So also, the challenge provisions are added to this section, as well as the Citation and Forfeiture section. And then the Appendix B is also revised to include the forfeiture amounts for citations issued in code enforcement cases. These had previously been adopted by the Board in Resolution 2003-34, but were not officially made a portion of the, made a part of the appendix for the enforcement of code and imposition of those fines. Chapter 209 is being amended to add, to clarify the county administrator's authority to direct the use and locations of any parking facilities, lighting, signage, flags, banners, displays, and implementation of any security protocols. So a minor revision to Chapter 209 to give that authority to the county administrator. And that following our policy session, or during our policy session on June 15th, this Board gave direction to our office to add some revisions to Chapter 603 Emergency Regulations. This clarifies a list of county offices that the Chair or the Board is authorized to assume centralized control of in an emergency declaration. This authority is authorized in the event of malfeasance in office or willful or want to neglect of duty of a county of public official, or the inability of a county public official to perform their duties in a timely or competent manner. Some changes to Chapter 608 Chronic Nuisance are being added to the code and revised. One of them is that to clarify the nuisance activity definition, to continue to include that is a violation for unlawful use of controlled substances on a property. This is necessary in light of legislation which reduced the penalties for many of these from a crime to a violation. Also, the building official has been added as someone who can enforce this section of the code. This is helpful. The way it's currently drafted is just the county sheriff that can enforce the Chronic Nuisance portion by sending letters and so on, and then refers to code enforcement. But many of these properties involve multiple code enforcement violations when there is not verified law enforcement involvement in crimes occurring on the property. So it gives the building official an opportunity to also enforce this section, those instances. So there are changes to 608, the notification, the letter that would go out, changing the way that be done to just first-class mail, which is consistent with also the Chapter 207, and other notices that go to properties with code enforcement violations. Summary closure section, clearer criteria for proceeding into Circuit Court. Also have entering closed property section to authorize criminal trespass as a remedy for violation of this section. And the attorney fee clause is being removed from this section because we rarely get it, and we don't want to subject the county to that risk. A new section is being added to the county code. This is Chapter 6.13 Exclusion of Persons from County Buildings or Property. This provides a list of folks in the county that can be in charge of a building and can exclude someone from property, county property, when they're being disruptive, and that's all defined in this code. It also provides a process for someone to challenge that designation if they are removed due to their disruptive behavior. And then finally, all of the changes that are included in this, in the materials for elimination of bias. Most common thing that we found was just eliminating gender, specific type language, making it more neutral. And so this process, our office did a review of the county code for facial bias, and then we involved Cindy Becker and Martine Koblenz for them to review this as well. They completed their work, and we are back with revised draft of the county code following that process. I think that is all that I have as far as the revisions, other than I'm happy to answer any questions about the revisions as they're there before you.
Thank you, Jeffrey Munn. Do Commissioners have any questions or comments? Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, I got three things on my mind. The quick one, I believe, is obvious, but I just want to get it on the record. We're not changing fees or fines in here specifically.
Not changing them, just including the, in Appendix B, the citation amounts for code enforcement cases that were already adopted but not, didn't get included in the Appendix B. They were adopted by resolution. So not changing them, just adding them into that portion of the appendix.
Okay. The second one is a lot of house cleaning, so to speak, and bringing things up in compliance. But my question overall, there's a lot of policy, so to speak, embedded in here, if you will. So has all of these things been brought before us?
The June 15th policy session, we reviewed all of these. The only thing that's new today would be that change of section, I'm sorry, Chapter 603 for the Emergency Declaration. These changes, all of them, have also, besides that one, have gone before the Code Committee, which is our office, as well as any other department that's affected by the code changes, have an opportunity to come, and we discuss them and how it would affect their operations.
And third, and more specifically, and maybe it's something for the Administrator or DTD staff, a lot of references to the code enforcement aspects that you kind of outlined, Jeff. So my question is, how is that, I won't say revenue neutral, but is there 100% cost recovery to code enforcement today? Or does this really help in a substantial way?
Yeah, I think-
To get 100% cost recovery?
Yeah, as far as 100% cost recovery, you know, the fines and the penalties, some of them are limited by statute, certainly, especially in the situation of building code violations. Those are capped by statute. The other violations that code enforcement works on, those penalties are set by the Board with an eye towards cost recovery. The difficulty oftentimes is these properties that are not complying with code and are consistent offenders, if you will, oftentimes don't have the money to abate the violations in the first place. So our ability to recover the funds is limited by their ability to pay. We do work, you know, that is one of our intentions, is to get cost recovery for the county. And so in those circumstances where the person complies and never paid any fines or fees, those go to collections, and the collection agency hired by the county does that work. In those cases where they don't abate the violation and they still owe the money as well, it comes to our office, and I litigate those cases to a judgment. In some cases, if they still don't comply, we have contempt of court proceedings going forward, which we have several currently. So yes, that is a component. Getting the money has proven difficult, although we have had a number of these cases where people take, you know, years and years to pay, and we've had some of tens of thousands of dollars that we've recovered. Some, it's a few thousand dollars. But that is something that we continue to work towards and do consistently get paid. But 100% cost recovery, I don't think we're there, just partly to the difficulties of obtaining that money.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, I will now open a public meeting, and I will take a first person in the room to testify. We don't see any. Tony, is there anybody on Zoom who wants to testify on this matter?
Madam Chair, at this time, there is no one registered to speak on this matter. If there is anyone who would like to provide public comment on this hearing, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, we do not have any hands raised.
Thank you very much. I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's any further discussion. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second. Commissioner Schrader has moved we read the ordinance by title only, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schull?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The Clerk, please assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
The ordinance will be numbered 03-2022, and ordinance amending Chapter 2.07 Compliance Hearing Officer, amending Appendix B Fines, amending Chapter 2.09 County Administrator, amending Chapter 6.03 Emergency Regulations, amending Chapter 6.08 Chronic Nuisance, adding Chapter 6.13 Exclusion of Persons from County Buildings and Property, and amending various chapters of the Clackamas County Code to eliminate bias and gender specificity and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, just a quick question. So this is the first reading, and we read it by title only. When will this, and then we have a second reading?
Correct.
And then when will, how long will it take for it to go into effect?
It'll take 90 days for it to go into effect if you go to a second reading. If you wanted to do it for immediate effect, you could declare the emergency and do it today in a single reading by title only, but that would have to be a unanimous vote, or it comes back for a second reading, and it would take 90 days following passages for it to become effective.
Okay. Well, I would suggest that we do declare an emergency on this and make it effective immediately, and I would hope that my fellow Commissioners would support that.
And we need a unanimous vote on that, 5-0. And how do we declare an emergency on this?
Point of order, Chair. We already are declaring an emergency, and this is scheduled for a second reading on July 21st. So if the Board were to pass it on July 21st, it would be effective upon signing by the Chair.
Okay.
That will be fine, then.
But we still need a 5-0 vote today.
You do not. We're not doing it under one reading. This is going to two readings. To do it under one reading, we'd have to read this in its entirety, not just by title only.
Oh, there's like 1,000 pages.
Exactly.
Okay. We won't be doing that. Thank you.
And there's other notices that are required, too. We didn't comply with those. So we seldom do one readings. We're going to do this one and two.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Stephen Madcor. All righty, the second reading will be Thursday, July 24th, as you said, 2022, at the Board's regularly scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. Thank you for that, and thank you, Jeff Munn, for coming forward. Gary, what's next?
Next is a board discussion item, and it is adoption of a board order authorizing a project agreement for the design, construction, partial financing, operation, and maintenance of the Clackamas County Circuit Courthouse with a special purpose entity formed by Fengate PCL Progress Partners and delegating authority to the county administrator to execute the project agreement and other related agreements that implement and accomplish the purpose of the transaction authorized by the board order. Project value is approximately $313 million. Funding is through the Oregon Courthouse Capital Construction Improvement Fund, the State of Oregon General Fund, the Oregon Judicial Department, and budgeted county general funds. Nate Boderman is Assistant County Counsel. He will be the lead presenter. Gary Barth, our project coordinator, is on Zoom if there are any questions for him, and I also will help answer questions. I think we're going to show a video, but Nate, do you want to have any opening comments?
Well, I'll just note that this is necessary in light of your decision last Wednesday to move forward with the courthouse project, and more specifically, Fengate's proposal is the preferred option. So what we have for you here this morning is review and approval of a board order that formally sets in motion the authorization to move this transaction to closing. So with that, it's probably a good time to do the video, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
If you want to narrate, Nate?
Sure, I can add a few comments here, I guess. For a long time, really since the county has had a campus master plan, it's been envisioned that the courthouse would be sort of that capstone facility surrounding the Circle of Honor and the other office buildings. The Circle of Honor really being the focal point and heart of the Red Soils campus. And so that's what you're seeing here. As we move around the back of the building, recognizing that it's adjacent to the neighborhood, it's been designed specifically to be set back and to have scaling that's sensitive to those uses adjacent to the campus. You see some new pedestrian facilities here. I think you'll find that these additions really change the way that people will move around and interact with the Red Soils campus as we introduce new members of the public that don't currently come up here to visit. You see the mass timber canopy there and moving into the secured screening area. And this was really a specific design choice to have the secured screening area and the entry be offset from the main lobby. You see the nice wide-open lobby area there. And the reason that that was offset is because putting it right in the middle of the facility would have impeded and obstructed the great views that we have down the Beaver Creek corridor right there into Mount Hood. And so this really maximizes and takes advantage of what we already have on this campus. Much of the public interaction will happen here on the first two floors. Again, wide-open areas, you see the jury assembly area there in a rendering of what the jury assembly area will look like, fully integrated into the courthouse. So this is a representative floor, courthouse floor, public waiting areas, multiple courthouses being on each floor here as you move up and moving into the courtroom specifically here, this being a trial courtroom with the jury there off to the right. I think what you'll find in many of these renderings, too, and what you should notice is just the use of the windows and the natural daylighting. This is a great view here, of course, from the outside, seeing the integration. That was a requirement really early on in the process to maximize the daylighting. And I think this design certainly hits the mark, certainly incorporates that desire. Looking up, this is a great contextual view of how the courthouse fits in with the rest of the buildings on the Red Soils campus, at least the two other main buildings, the Another good view of how the Circle of Honor will be modified and reoriented due to the courthouse design and how this really fits in and completes what is otherwise kind of seen again as the focal point and the heart of the Red Soils campus. So what you have with that video really is a comprehensive and pretty accurate rendering of what the new courthouse will look like. The building is designed to a point where costs and design, those typically variable costs, can actually be known at this point. So in many regards, what you see is what you will get with this project. The action today is a bit heavy on process, so I apologize in advance for that, but it is necessary, again, to implement the direction that you provided to staff last week. With this board order is approval of a form of contract with Fengate to govern the design, construction, partial finance, operation, and maintenance of that facility that you just saw in the video. If you approve this board order, Fengate and county staff will have the necessary authorization to begin compiling all the materials to proceed to a formal closing of this transaction. There's a lot of materials and related agreements associated with this transaction. So to help facilitate that closing, the board order also includes a delegation of authority to the county administrator to execute the final version of the project agreement within the limits stated in the board order and to execute other related agreements that's necessary to implement, again, the project agreement and the project that's described in the board order. If the board order is approved, we'd be working with Fengate over the next month or month and a half, really, to close the transaction, implement the schedule that we've shared with you previously, which is a formal closing with Fengate in August, final design of the courthouse proceeding over the next year, resulting in a final design by the end of the year, groundbreaking shortly thereafter in January with a substantially complete building ready for occupancy by May of 2025. So that's really what you're being asked to approve in a nutshell. I know that there were some questions that came up yesterday from Commissioners. I want to make sure that we were able to clarify some of those points for you. Happy to answer any follow-up questions you have, I guess, just for the sake of, you know, following up on yesterday. I do want to clarify, so the number that we talked about, that $313 million capital cost estimate, really is an all-inclusive number representing costs associated with the design and the construction of the new courthouse. So the majority of that will be fixed or is fixed, as represented in the contract with Fengate. What's variable, and I think where some of the confusion came in yesterday, was some of the costs that the county is retaining. And so we are retaining some project costs, whether that be costs associated with transportation improvement, system development charges, consultant costs. Those are county responsibilities, and some of those are unknown costs right now. But again, relatively speaking, it's a small percentage of that $313 million overall cost figure. So I just wanted to clarify that for you. Happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have on that.
Yes, now it's time for questions, clarifying questions for Commissioners.
I don't have questions, but when it's time for comments, I have comments.
I think we can entertain comments at this point.
Okay.
Go ahead, Paul.
Well, just for clarification, you know, I'm mainly speaking to the people that are in our Zoom audience, and I think my colleagues have heard most of what I'm saying, so I'm really not speaking to my colleagues here. I just want to just, and I think specifically myself, as the one dissenting vote last Wednesday and probably today as well, my concern about this has been, this is new, a P3 model is new. I had concerns last, on May 5th of last year, about the maintenance cost that then estimated a million, or $3 million a year. And, you know, that has accelerated to $4 million a year, specifically $3.3 million for the maintenance plan, if you will, and $700,000 per year for the capital components of that maintenance for replacement and repairs, for a total of $4 million per year for 30 years at $120 million, plus the ongoing annual maintenance of the building. If it's going to be set at that rate, that will be more than all of our maintenance for all of our buildings in all of Clackamas County combined. Still, it's more than that with that combined. So that's a concern. I do have a challenge with it. I mentioned this yesterday, but I do have a challenge that we'll be paying this maintenance fee of $4 million a year before the building's completed and immediately thereafter. It just seems odd that the taxpayers will be paying $4 million a year for maintenance on opening day, for example, on a brand-new building. I just struggle with that, and I struggle with that amount of money going forward. So the other aspect of this with the P3 model is that it appears to me, from what I've read, is that it's the least flexible in the ongoing years. Should we find better financing opportunities or the construction market improves? We don't really don't own the building. We actually buy it back in the end, if I'm not mistaken. Not, you're shaking your head, no?
No, we retain ownership throughout.
So do we have flexibility to do any kind of, if the construction market improves, to take advantage of that construction market?
I think those are different concepts, right? The building ownership and the flexibility to amend a contract, I think, are two separate questions. We will own the building, but you're correct in that many of the costs, the bulk of the costs are fixed and guaranteed. And so in the same way that you are, you don't have the ability to make changes on the fly or to do change orders, you are also protected from cost overages, and so it does cut both ways.
Yep.
Paul, if I can just interject, can we roll up the screen? I don't want, it's noisy, I didn't want to do it while you were speaking. Also, remember, Gary Barth, the project manager, is online as well to answer any questions about specifics that we may have on this. Thank you. But I don't think that we are going to really debate what we've been talking about for months and months on this. I think Nate Boderman has done a very good job in putting out a four-page, single-spaced memo, and Gary Schmidt has some other information regarding on costs associated with transferring of the mental health clinics, too. So Paul, go ahead.
Yeah, that's great. I'm not debating anything. I don't assume to change anyone's mind here today. I just want to just express my concerns about this. The other aspect of this is that in May of last year, it was then clear that we would, by this budget year, have a sustainable, structurally sound budget that would carve the way to make this payment for this project. The payment is now estimated to be approximately about $15 million for the first year, and I think the first year is always, the fact that it's been called out frequently as the first-year payment when I asked the question, I think draws attention away for the ongoing payments that actually accelerate at a higher rate. And that, and those are not firm as of today, as Mr. Boderman explained yesterday, until the financing cost and those final costs. But, you know, we have, you know, reason to believe and projection to believe that'll be 16, 17, and later years, up to $18 million a year payments in future years. That's concerning. And what's not locked in, as was described yesterday, is the maintenance cost. That can go up with inflation, and inflation is moving at a pretty good clip, so that's also concerning. But we don't have a sustainably sound budget. We don't have a carve-out for the $15 million. And I made the comment, a concern, last week, that the means to pay for this have yet to be identified, and that's a fact. And that gives me, that's part of the pause. And my concern, most especially, is that the cuts that will be necessary to make the payment are of concern of mine, because we don't know what those are specifically. And I think there are things that our citizens in this county value, and I think if they find out, perhaps, that they are either no longer available, those departments are closed, or those staff aren't there, or that service has diminished to a considerable degree, I think there will be a lot of upset. I don't know. A lot of things that we do, are talking about here are general fund. Those are paid for with your property tax dollars. That's where general fund is mostly, mostly derived from, is property tax dollars. So I have a concern about that. My closing little comparator here is I had a chance on Sunday to talk to some friends in Lane County, in Lane County government. in Lane County, in Lane County government, and they have been, they have gone to the voters once, and they will go to the voters again. They have really had to cut their public safety significantly for other reasons, but they simply can't afford the courthouse that they need as well, and they have a population similar to ours of about 370,000, I believe, currently today. So they will have to go to the voters to pay for their courthouse should they move forward, but they just simply don't have the means to make much of any payments towards that, and we have not demonstrated ourselves that we have the means to pay for it or where it's going to get cut. And that concludes my comments, and those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Schmidt, regarding the relocation of the mental health clinics, that lease is being paid, the rent payments on that by?
So right now, in the current buildings, they're owned by the county, so there's no rent paid, but when these facilities are moved to the new location, which has been identified, that will be paid by federal dollars. These behavioral health clinics are considered federally qualified health centers, FQHC, and so there are dollars that our staff has budgeted for this anticipation of this event, and it'll be paid by federal dollars and a little bit of state Medicaid dollars, but mostly federal dollars. So it's been budgeted, and staff's prepared to pay that out of our existing federal dollars for the rent.
Thank you. And Gary Barth, you're online. Would you care to make any comments about what the payment is and any discussion that you have heard thus far?
Good morning, commissioners. I apologize if my voice breaks. I am battling COVID, so I'm in isolation. The only thing I would, I would offer is the payment to Fengate begins the day the building is occupied and not before, so it'll be occupied and certified. We will be, the day that building is open to the public, it will start seeing normal wear and tear. The building will need to be cleaned daily, maintained daily for continued operations. That's what the standard facility management charge is covering. And then the reserve that Commissioner Savas mentioned is for repair and replacement of components of the building as they were out over the 30-year term. So that's the distinction between those two, and those two are indexed to inflation. They're pegged to the West Coast Consumer Price Index. So we have history of the CPI, and we will know in advance of what those increases will be based on that index.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Schrader, your light is on.
Oh, I am prepared to make a motion.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't know if other commissioners have any comments, but...
Go ahead, for the discussion.
Second discussion. I move for the adoption of a board order authorizing a project agreement for the design, construction, partial financing, operation, and maintenance of the Clackamas County Circuit Courthouse with a special purpose entity formed by Fengate, PCL Program Partners, and delegating authority to the county administrator to execute the project agreement and other related agreements that implement and accomplish the purpose of the transaction authorized by the board order.
Second. Commissioner Schrader has moved for the adoption of the courthouse project. Commissioner Fisher has seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, Chair, just briefly. I just want to just restate again that I support the courthouse. I support the need for the courthouse. I have no quarrels with the design. However, it's really the finances that are my, will be the purpose or concern of my dissenting vote.
Any, oh, Commissioner Scholl.
For the residents of Clackamas County who are watching these proceedings this morning, I'd like to remind you of the idea that this public-private partnership is being done because we don't have the money to come up with starting construction on our own. This process is going to enable us through creative financing with the Fengate, the builders and designers of this project, to make this happen. The other thing, too, in addition to concerns about finances, is that this project, a great deal of work has gone into it, it's ready to go, it's ready to give us a courthouse in 2025. If we were to stop this project for any reason, the potential for coming up with a new plan for financing could put us out in the future, and it might be a long way in the future. The other thing is that the need for this courthouse is driven in part by the need for law and order, and we need, our justice system in the county, our district attorney and our judges need to be able to process court cases in a timely fashion, and they won't be able to do that until they get this new courthouse. The other thing, too, to set some people's mind at ease at this big cost, this morning I was looking at the news, and there's a report on a new library distribution building that Multnomah County has, commissioners have passed to build. It's $300 million, and it's going to be a remodel of a Safeway store. That gives you an idea of the high cost of construction. So I agree with Commissioner Savas that I, too, have concerns about some of the details for putting all the money together. We've heard from some of our, our justice folks in Salem and here in the county that they'll work to help secure additional state money for this project. But I'm convinced that this project is in the best interest of the people of Clackamas County, and in the long run, when it's done, I think we'll look back on this day and say moving ahead was a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, Gary, I have a question for you, too, and that is, my understanding is that this project will also include opportunities for apprentice training. Is that true? I think it, I think it is.
Yes, we're following the C2P2 Construction to Careers Pathways Project.
Okay.
The regional project that, yes, there's apprentice programs, there is, I forget all the stuff it encompasses, but yes, we're following that, that the board approved a year or so ago.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make is not only we'll be constructing a new facility, and this has been on the books since I've been a commissioner since 2003, we're also going to be using it as an opportunity for a workforce pipeline because the construction industry is short of labor. So I'm proud of the fact that we can actually implement that and not only have our courthouse that has been on the books for so long finally moving ahead, but we're also providing that workforce component. Thanks, Gary. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few comments, and I apologize, commissioners, for being a few minutes late to the meeting today. I was meeting with Sheriff Brandenburg, and our, our conversation was fast and furious over all kinds of issues about our public safety system, and I looked down at my watch and it's like, oh my goodness, I have to be on the dais in 10 minutes. So I appreciate your leeway in me being late today. But it just brings to light how critically important the courthouse is because it is really the foundation of our public safety system. So our investment today through a process that allows us to get this done is extremely critical. We can make all the investments we want with our, in our safe communities through making sure our sheriff's office is well-staffed, to make sure they have the tools like body cameras and other things that they need. We can make sure that our district attorney has what, what he needs in order to prosecute cases, but if you don't have courtrooms for the judges that we need, it all falls apart. So they're really, this is really fundamental to the core of what we as a county government are required to do, and I really appreciate, Commissioner Schrader, you making the motion, and I'm looking forward to us going through all the, it's not going to be fun, you guys, hearing the sounds, seeing the mess, seeing the construction. We're going to go through a little bit of a, bit of a journey, but in all of that, we can just keep the vision of what we are accomplishing here to get through this next leg of the journey.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. I would like to say in closing that courthouses are a core county service. Since statehood was established in Oregon in 1859, the county courthouse in Oregon City was one of the first buildings. It's one of the, this is the second courthouse. It's one of the oldest buildings. It is the oldest courthouse in the entire state of Oregon, and it was originally built with one courthouse, one courtroom in it. Now they've expanded to, what, nine, 10, 11, and we need many more because of growth. It is no longer healthy, it's no longer safe for the public, for judges, lawyers, and anybody who uses the courthouse. It's very important that we move, we move forward on this. And most importantly, the state of Oregon is paying cash half the bill. Need to remember, the 313 is being paid about half from the state of Oregon, and they have, the judicial department in Oregon and the state legislature has deemed this as a very important, core governmental service. So we're doing the best we can to make this happen. Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Nay.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes for one. Thank you very much, commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you, Chair. Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda is as follows. Elected officials, there are one item, approval of the June 30th, 2022 meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. County Council, one item, approval of an amendment to the Library, Construction, and Operation Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County and the city of Gladstone. This amendment extends the deadline for construction completion by 12 months with no change to the agreement value. Health Housing Human Services, item one, approval of a cooperation agreement with Clackamas County Children's Commission to fund and administer construction of building improvements at the Estacada Head Start Preschool. Agreement value is $240,000, of which $140,000 will be, will be provided by Clackamas County. Funding is through federal community development block grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment adjusting budgeting of a sub-recipient grant agreement with Northwest Family Services to provide federal, to provide shelter and rent assistance services. Agreement value remains at $857,500. Funding is through federal emergency solutions grant funds. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval to apply for funding opportunity with Clackamas Workforce Partnership with For Prosperity 10,000. To increase employment services, grant value is $149,999 for one year. Funding is through Clackamas Workforce Partnership. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment increasing funding of a fixed-price sub-agreement with Oregon State University for parenting education expansion programs. Amendment value is $98,035. Agreement value is increased to $167,785. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an annual statement of assurances and verification of intent for the Older Americans Act area plan for 2021-2025. Statement has no fiscal impact. Underlying agreement has a value of $2,608,920, including $306,550 of budgeted county general funds. Other funding is through state and federal funds and matching funds from sub-precipients. Item six, approval of sub-recipient agreement with Trimest for statewide transportation improvement funds for fiscal years 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023. Agreement value is $2,512,199. Funding is through Oregon Department of Transportation. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony, for that. Does any commissioner wish to remove any items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has moved for the approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Schrader has seconded that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. Now is the time in the business meeting for public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of board consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I see no one. Tony, I believe we have a representative from the Stafford Hamlet on Zoom.
That is correct, Madam Chair.
And he will have five minutes, so go ahead and please bring him on and introduce him.
Mr. Fiala?
I'm here, sir.
Please state your name and area of residence. You will have five minutes.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it, Tony. My name is Richard Fiala. I'm vice chair of the Stafford Hamlet, so I'm, area is the Stafford Hamlet, just south of Lake Oswego. So thank you very much for having me here. My job is to fill in for our Chair, Bill Mark, and to give you an update on the status of the Hamlet as it sits currently. So Chair Smith, commissioners, Mr. Smith, thank you very much for allowing us to come in and present today, or allowing me to come in and present today. So I've got a prepared statement. I could do it off the cuff, but I don't, I can't do that in five minutes. So here we go. Climate apps, we have many Stafford Hamlet programs. One of them is a climate action partnership program. The Hamlet had invited Tuallaton, Westland, and Lake Oswego to work together with and include the Hamlet as part of a larger initiative. While each of the cities is at different stages of planning and action, we committed to stay in touch and look towards the future of working together to see if we can come something, come up with something. And I would also mention that we're happy to work with the county as well. And we held that meeting, I believe it was in February, with those three cities. The next is an interesting program that fits in a Hamlet or a CPO environment, and it's called, we have Neighborhood Captains and Mapping. Andy Munson, one of our board members, has spearheaded the development of a mapping tool to promote distinct area cohesion and communications. The Hamlet is primarily not made up of neighborhoods, but generalized areas. To this end, with not only the threat of natural events such as wildfires, ice storms, heat waves, and earthquakes, we are also faced with the increasing instances of criminal activity. The goal is to look out for your neighbors by providing assistance when needed and alerting them to immediate or future intrusions. The goal is working with neighborhood captains who can access contact information the Hamlet members have provided freely. We have situations that, where this has already helped us with people walking through a neighborhood, having parked down on the freeway, and actually that was a situation that when confronted by the deputies who were called, they arrested three people for burglary. The next one is a tree planting program. So last winter, the Hamlet contacted an OSU forestry extension agent to see about trees to plant in the Hamlet. Because of our late start, the Hamlet only purchased 50 Doug firs and 100 red cedars for resale to Hamlet residents. The community members embraced the project, and all but a handful of the trees went into the ground. We planned to go at it again, starting this fall with more community notification to build awareness and participation, with the hope of a substantial increase of the number of trees that get planted. And finally, the Stafford Hamlet Family Fest. After a two-year hiatus, we are jump-starting the fourth fest on September 10 at Fiala Farms. It is located at 21231 Southwest Johnson Road, Westland. It will be open for family activities from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. In 2019, we had about 750 visitors and just under 100 volunteers. We are planning for that kind of number again. Many of you have been to the event in the past, and we cordially invite you to attend again, or for your first time. Westland, Lake Oswego, and Tuallaton city councilors, mayors, and citizens of those cities are always invited, and we've had great attendance from past and present elected officials. While there are no campaign speeches allowed, working the crowd as a representative... While there are no campaign speeches allowed, working the crowd as a representative of the people is encouraged. We also encourage elected officials to speak about the Hamlet's connection to the community, county, and cities. There will be 30-something booths from local businesses, community nonprofits, government entities like Clackamas County Soil and Water Conservation District, and to help support the Hamlet's initiative of linking potential land to farmers, the Oregon Agricultural Trust will be participating. For the kids, we have face painting, kids' games, a clown, musical entertainment, and much more, including several local wineries for your adult pleasure. And I forgot, we'll have some alpacas and horses and goats and chickens as well for everybody to stick their hand out towards. So as you can imagine, to get any event off the ground like this takes hours and a huge, many hundreds of hours and a huge effort to hold us, hold a successful festival with, I might say, no cost to the community or to the county. Thank you, sponsors. One of the primary goals of the Stafford Hamlet is to build community. Our board is always aware of this goal. The Family Fest is an ongoing effort to embrace all of our Hamlet members and surrounding communities, while educating them about the substantial farming history of the Hamlet and allowing them to sit, set foot on a work, working Oregon century farm. And finally, each of our initiatives not only looks back in our history, but attempts to build a smarter future for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard Fiala, for that very comprehensive update on your activities. We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate the invitation to attend the Family Fest and see all of the activities happening this summer and hopefully into fall as well. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, Rich, thanks for your comments here today, and thanks for the, the Hamlet doing all the work that they do to build community. Hopefully, I'll be able to get out there again this year. I don't know for sure, but I'll try and make it out there. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other comments for the speaker? Seeing none, Richard, thank you very much for coming today.
Take care, everybody. Be well.
We will. Tony, is there anybody else?
Madam Chair, at this time, I do not have anyone else registered to speak. If there is anyone who would like to provide public comment, please use the raise hand feature. Madam Chair, do not have any hands raised.
I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting, and we will move on. Gary, can you introduce the next item?
Yes, next is County Administrator Update. That's me. I always like to share the good things our employees and our programs do for the community. First today, a, we received a note from Beth Willhite, who is the president of the Bull Run Community Planning Organization, or CPO. She wanted to thank two of our staff who spoke at a recent Bull Run CPO meeting. They are both from Transportation and Development. Joel Howie, Transportation Engineering Supervisor, and Kevin Hutchinson, Motor Carrier Safety Coordinator. Beth wrote, "I want to thank you again for coming out to talk to our CPO about the status of issues surrounding the Bull Run Bridge. Everyone was very interested and engaged with what you had to say, and some who weren't able to attend have contacted me to hear what information you provided. I know it's late and it was probably a long day for you to come out and attend our meeting, but please know how much we appreciated your time and efforts." So thank you to Joel and Kevin for their work. Next, our Transportation and Development last month hosted the first in-person public meetings for transportation projects since the pandemic. They were two open houses for improvement projects in Milwaukee and Oatfield area. The session, each session attracted 30 people each in person who asked questions and provided feedback on the proposed designs. The projects are the Monroe Street and Webster Road project improvements, and they support our community by making it easier and safer for residents to walk, bike, and enjoy their neighborhoods. So thank you to our team who helped coordinate these first in-person public comment meetings. That's my update for today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Gary. I will now open it up for Commissioner Communication, and up first is Commissioner Savas.
Chair, there's a misprint that's been there several times in the script. It says, just as you read it, now is time for Commissioner Communication. Let's start with Commissioner Savas. But if you look at the order, and I have spoken first so many times, but I thought at least this week I would at least point out that the script is incorrect.
Why don't we start with Commissioner Schrader then?
I don't, I can go first, but I just want to point out that, that, there's been an error there, so I have spoken first so many times, but I didn't want to take that opportunity away from Commissioner Schrader, because she has listened first.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Is that okay? All right, whoever.
Do whatever you want.
Okay, all right. Let me get started. Well, I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. One of the things I did was take a look at the Library of Congress website to check out Thomas Jefferson's rough draft of the Declaration of Independence. Oh, really? You can actually see it. You can actually see it in writing. You can see the corrections he made as he wrote it. And I'm hopeful that every week I may bring a tidbit back from the Library of Congress. I do get information from them on a regular basis, and I think it's wonderful to know what our great nation has, a repository that is one of the biggest libraries in the world, and we can get documents of this sort. So hopefully, everybody had a great Fourth, and I was glad I could find that and share that today. Most recently, I had a meeting with the Association of Oregon County's Community Solutions Group. We're actually pulling together our strategy for the year on how we can bond together on issues of mutual importance and lobby our legislature and move forward with agendas. The two things that have risen to the top is housing. So we are going to be looking at, taking a look at a bill that we've put to the legislature twice, third time's a charm, that we're hoping will funnel dollars locally to our smaller communities and counties in the state, so they can access the same level of dollars that some of us that have larger counties and staff enjoy for working with housing issues, and that would be affordable housing as well as emergency housing. So that was interesting. The next piece that was really important is water. Evidently, some of our, rest of our counties are, as we know, are experiencing significant drought in eastern Oregon and western Oregon, and they would like to get together to help influence how we respond to drought conditions as things change in our climate. So that was another thing that rose to the top. We do have Water and Environment Services here in our county. I am hopeful, as a liaison to those folks, that I can report back to them, and they, and Wes can give us some opportunities to weigh in on significant water issues. They don't deal with drinking water. In order to get those folks, I'd have to go to their consortium to talk to them about what they're doing when talking about drinking water. But Wes is our manager of Clean Water Environments and has done a lot of environmental work. So there's that. Right now, I am preparing for a panel for the National Associations of Counties. We'll all be presenting a conversation on the county's role in international, in fostering international trade. In preparation for that, as many of you know, I went through and visited some of our major health systems. I'm now moving on to our manufacturing base and other businesses that actually are exporting. I'll be visiting Bob's Red Mill. I have Oregon Tool and Precision Cast Parts on the, on the docket. The Pacific Northwest Defense Coalition, Commissioner Scholl and I met with them, and I think that they feel happy that we're trying to rebuild a, a relationship with them, and they were so thrilled to meet Commissioner Scholl that he, they've asked him to speak at one of their events. So I think that's, that's a great thing. The other piece I want to let you know that I am preparing for because of that NACO conference is that I will be visiting next week the U.S. Commercial Service. And the U.S. Commercial Service is part of the U.S. Department of Commerce's International Trade Administration, and it offers companies a full range of expertise in international trade. So we do have a component of that in Portland that actually serves our businesses, and I hope the county as well, as we take a look at an initiative of this kind to build a vibrant economy. And so I'll be talking with them next week to learn more about their services and to learn about their client success stories. So that's the news for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I know that in our conversations, we have shared with each other that we all had a very eventful Fourth of July, some Fourth of July celebrations more restful than others. I, for one, really enjoyed heading out to Westland where Commissioner Savas joined me, and we were able to kick off the Westland fireworks events. And Alice Richmond, who isn't shy about claiming responsibility for the events organization, and also with all of her spunk and personality, isn't also shy about saying that she is 90 years old. So it was such, such fun sharing the stage with her, wasn't it, Commissioner Savas? It was really, really nice to see the community, to be there, and in looking at what the gifts of our country, the formation of our government, the democracy, the liberty and justice for all, all of the ideals that we get to continue to work on and strive for. It's a beautiful experiment worthy of, of celebration each year. So that was very, very fun. I, I'm disappointed, and I, I know that people don't like to talk about COVID anymore, but I'm disappointed that we, our cases are rising. In our last report, our Public Health Department through Philip Joiner is so great about informing us about what's going on. In our last report on 6/30, our cases continued to rise, a 30.6% increase from the previous week. Despite all of that with the cases rising, the hospitalizations are not spiking and continuing to increase at the rate that they were previously. And in my mind, that is a very significant marker about what is safe in, in our community. But regardless of that, there is a recommendation from the CDC and from the Oregon Health Authority that masks be worn indoors. And I'm still, I'm looking in deeper. I know we, we were such a place that we stopped our weekly reports from Philip Mason-Joiner and got them every other week. And right now, things are, are dynamic and changing. So I appreciate our public health and our public affairs getting information out about what's, what's happening, and that we are keeping abreast of, of the changes. So I wanted to mention that. Also, I mentioned briefly that I had a meeting with Sheriff Brandonberg. There is so much happening throughout our efforts to create a more stable foundation for public safety and looking ahead towards what isn't working in other parts of the country and trying to be preventative in our very unique and special place called Clackamas County. And I know there'll be more to come. I am looking forward to continued conversations, and I know that Sheriff Brandonberg and our district attorney are planning to come back to our board to give us, give us more updates. Looking forward to that. And with that, those are the, concludes my comments today.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savas, you now have your opportunity to speak. Thank you kindly.
How about that? I think we just strike that one sentence, or that one sentence there will be fine and just go in rotational order will be fine, but there's always a lot to this. And anyhow, I too took advantage of the holiday weekend to get out in the community. I remember, it was hard not to remember, shortly after the fires, they were still happening and smoldering and being put out by the U.S. Forest Service. I know that the Board of County Commissioners went out on Hollickburn Road and other areas where there were substantial fires and damage to homes. And I remember even Beaver Creek area, we were walking on ground that was still smoldering and roots that were, had burned through, and a lot of, we call widowmakers, where sometimes those trees come down. So ODOT has done a lot of work at, at an area along Highway 224 and has opened up a substantial part of that. Still more work to be done, but it was great to get out in the community and see that, meet with the, with the Estacada Fire folks at their annual pancake breakfast there in Estacada, and again, speaking to all the people and the first responders that dealt with that. And so it was a, a reminder, a reminder out there to see some of the trees that, while you see a lot of recoveries, a lot of trees that are charred, but still a lot of growth on them too. So some trees are dead and burned, and there are a lot of trees that are still standing and, and recovering. So, but a good reminder. Also was able to get out to other parts of the county. Commissioner Fisher mentioned Westland, was in Lake Oswego, numerous areas, trying to get out and talk to folks about what was going on and celebrate the Fourth of July and Independence Day. What I did want to talk about briefly today, we'll be talking about it next week, and we'll continue to be talking about it, is this week, we just got a sudden notice of a couple of different opportunities, though very short order, from ODOT with regards to their, what's titled here as the Draft Low-Income Toll Report, and also the, the Oregon Highway Goal Six tolling congestion pricing study. And we've been on, we've been on top of this since 2017, when the legislature passed the transportation bill, which has greatly, this, this issue about tolling has changed and morphed and seems to be changing really so inconsistently, but frequently. It's, the, the purpose is changing, it seems, and we have two reports that come out at the same time that say two different things about what the purpose is of congestion pricing, variable pricing. From the beginning, they have stated, ODOT, acting under the direction of the legislature. Might want to just clarify that, so it's not ODOT that's forcing this upon us, it's really the legislative bills HB 35, 3055, and HB 2017 that have mandated this. But they have stated that congestion pricing's purpose is to change people's behavior, so that they will not drive in congestion times, they will take transit, they will walk, they will bike, and so forth. And when you read the, for example, the urban mobility strategy, which is really to, and you know, people of low income certainly have a hardship, and it's not really fair to provide or not provide alternative modes of transportation for everyone in the region, especially. And Clackamas County is part of that region. I-205 is part of that region. Most of the region has a lot of those options. Along the 205 corridor, there is no transit. There is no opportunity for other people to take other modes. Not everyone can afford a car or pay for the insurance, and yet this is really trying to accommodate people that do have a car, that are of low income, to travel at, at, you know, a reduced cost or no cost in their car. But that really defeats the purpose of congestion pricing if folks can, can do that. You know, they, they won't have an incentive to change their behavior. But the problem with that is more, it's not that they, that we don't need that relief. It's more along the lines that the, that we were told at the very onset that in 2017, that the estimated cost for several sections of tolling at that time, for each of those points of the freeway system, would be about $300 million in revenue. And of that $300 million, zero of that $300 million multiplied times all the areas, so it's billions of dollars actually, would generate, would, that money generated would not pay for any construction cost. It was simply the cost, the administrative cost to implement the congestion pricing program. And when you add that up, let's just say $2 billion for, just round it off. Let's, actually, let's be fair. Let's just take a billion, we'd be modest. Take a billion, a billion dollars a year to administer a cost, and what could we build with a billion dollars? We have not had one year where, in this region that I've been around, where we got a billion dollars of transportation funding for capital projects. Never. And yet, we would, we would raise the money and then raise this money and then distribute the cost to administrative. It defeats the purpose, really frankly. It adds to the cost, it adds to inflation, it hurts a lot of folks. And then we were told, oh, we can use that money for, we could use some of that money for transit. Well, then we find out as we go along, as the years progress forward, no, we can't use it for transit because that's constitutionally not allowed. So we were led down the rosy path that we could actually take some of those dollars. And again, the game seems to continue to change, and it seems to continually defeat the purpose. It could, seems to continually be poised. It seems to continually be poised to burden everyone financially. It's not equitable. It doesn't achieve the climate benefits if people don't have transit, if you will, their own goal. And I'm just baffled, and we'll talk about this more as time goes on, but all in all, I think our letter, that letters that we have sent, our position that we have sent, I think are still resonate with me. Have an express lane, have a toll lane, but offer the free lanes. The administrative cost is substantially less. The capital raise will go towards, the money raised will go towards those fees, and you don't need to impede or affect people of low income or BIPOC communities or marginalized communities because they will have an option which is free, which is basically a free use of the roads, by the way, that we've already paid for. So more to come on that. I haven't spoken about the tolling program in a long time, but I did want to take this point in time to say that having just a matter of days before the comment period, which is next week, the public hearing, and then having a two-week open, this is just sudden, ill-prepared, and it doesn't really give a lot of our staff and the public opportunity to even advertise and let people know that you'll have this hearing next week, and very little time to prepare everyone and everyone, everyone and anyone with the information and the arguments. And by the way, these are 50-plus pages in one document and several, well over 100 on the other documents, so I don't know how people can actually absorb that and actually speak to our elected officials. That said, Chair, those concludes my comments for today.
Thank you for that report, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good morning. On law and order, this morning, you heard the board take action on a new courthouse that's going to have a big effect on law and order in Clackamas County. But we see crime increasing in the region, and we need to do something about it. The county sheriff's department has roughly 400 personnel. We have 430,000 residents in the county, and so we need residents of Clackamas County to be aware of not emergency line numbers, tip line numbers, your neighborhood watch number, and the graffiti at clackamas.us email address. Know these things for the county and your city so that you can report crime when you see it or problems when you see it to help out our city police departments and our county sheriff. It's very important. On the use of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, there will be a ARPA nonprofit capacity building webinar at 11:00 a.m. on 27 July. Nonprofits and residents of the county can register online and participate. Please be involved. That webinar will cover requirements for application for those dollars. On the boring and dull days, put 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, August 9th on your calendar for the parade and boring and the festivities. Be ready for a good time, some free ice cream, and meet a lot of really good people. On the Veterans Village at 115th and Jennifer Street in Clackamas County, the village is doing a great job to support our veterans, and if you know a veteran who's struggling and needs shelter, please contact the Veterans Services here at the county, 503-650-5631. Help is available. On psilocybin and Measure 109, that was passed in 2020, this is a controversial issue. We need residents in the county to weigh in with their views on psilocybin and how it should be administered. Please join us for a public hearing next Thursday at the business meeting at 10:00. We need the input of mental health professionals and county residents as well. On tolling, Commissioner Savis just spoke about it. It's not gone away. It looks like it's getting closer and closer to implementation despite the concerns of our county and cities and the questions and issues we've shared with ODOT over the last couple of years. Please be informed. See the state, county, and metro websites for more information, and let your state rep know how you feel. As an example, if you're going from Sandy to Walton and back, how is buses or mass transit going to help your trip? You know, ODOT Metro says they're going to do a study on how to increase bus service around the Abernathy Bridge and the I-205 tolling area, but that's not going to do you any good if you're going, you know, from Sandy to Walton and back, for an example, nor will it do any good if you're a small business. Like Commissioner Savis said, next week's a public hearing. Please, we need people to get on board and let your opinions be known about what I consider the threat of tolling. On the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo, please, moms and dads, get that on your schedule, August 16 through 20. We need to see you there. Today, at 7:00, is a Sandy Mountain Parade in Sandy, Oregon, and then this Saturday and Sunday in Minnick Park, you'll have the festival. Please come and join us there tonight and this weekend. And finally, a thought for the day. No level of government can function well without the benefit of the opinions of a great many of its constituents. Together, they can have the greatest effect on decision-making and policymaking. Please be involved in government at the county, city, and state and federal level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Yesterday, Commissioners toured the Veterans Village, 20 pods located out in the unincorporated area of Clackamas County to take in veterans who might otherwise be homeless or in need of services. It's a very successful program, very well received. People like it out there. It was mentioned because of the trees and the secluded area, although it's surrounded by a lot of activity. It's very much a healing place. The average time is between nine months and one year, and we're able to find housing for these people, jobs. They have services available to help them if they need it. It was a very good tour yesterday that the Commissioners went on. We also attended last Friday a memorial service for Ralph Groner, a former Clackamas County Commissioner and legislator, and we all knew him in various ways. It was a lot of speakers and told a lot of funny stories and wonderful stories, and I'll never forget when he took his granddaughter to the legislature when he was a lobbyist, excuse me, the legislature, and she came home and says, Grandma? You know, Grandpa doesn't work at all. The only thing he does is talk all day. And that really struck with me. It really struck with me. My daughter mentioned something similar to me when I was in the legislature as well. You just talk all day. So I thought that was really fun to hear. Commissioners, I look forward to an active summer of decision-making. Please take a look at the green sheet. We have wonderful opportunities to use our ARPA funds to move forward on some projects that I know is dear and near to our hearts to all Commissioners. And just take a look at the schedule and be mindful and present, and we are going to do some wonderful, wonderful activities this summer with that in mind. Hearing no further business before this board, we are adjourned.